Welcome to Philbrick Channel.
We'd like to move to recognize the sponsor of the committee report, no other than our distinguished Senate President, the President, Senate President Vicente Soto III. I saw move, Mr. President.
An objection? Chair here is none. The Senate President is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Presiding Officer. At the outset, Mr. President, I would like to submit to the body the complete committee report. It's already been placed on record. It'll take, it took us four hours to read, most of us. Of course, it's not surprising because we had 28 hours and 3 minutes of hearings conducted. So I would like to thank you and the senators. I would like to thank all our colleagues for their cooperation into this investigation and inquiry in aid of legislation. The sponsorship speech that I prepared, I will have to admit, is quite lengthy. But I have edited it and confined it to the most important and salient features of the report. So I will have to beg the indulgence of our colleagues because it will take a little longer than usual. But I assure you, the more important and salient points of the report has to be read into the records. Of course, this does not preclude any of our members to, at the proper time, include or add or even delete any portion of the committee report. But as of now, this is how it stands. And let me begin, Mr. President. On July 27, or 27 July 2020, Senate Resolution Number 475 was filed entitled,[143.91][144.47]"Resolution Calling for the Constitution of the Senate Committee of the Whole Conducting Inquiry in Aid of Legislation on the Alleged Rampant Corruption, Incompetence, and Inefficiency of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, Philhealth, Amidst the COVID-19 Pandemic That May Lead to the Financial Collapse of the Institution to the Prejudice of the Filipino People." Although initially authored by Senators Laxon and Disreputation, it was later co-authored by most of our colleagues in the Senate. I must admit, Mr. President, that I take this task of reporting out the findings of the Committee of the Whole with a little reluctance at first for we are in the middle of our fight against the COVID-19 pandemic. And that we should not change horses midstream, so to speak. It is suggested that we must let the pandemic first subside before advocating for changes in the areas of leadership, organization, systems, and operations of Philhealth. However, it may be a worse course of action for this chamber to sit idly by knowing what it knows now, how mismanaged Philhealth is to cope with the rising cost of its health responsibilities to the Filipino people. Any reform in personnel and its organization cannot come from within its ranks when all have been tainted with suspicion through active participation or inaction in the conspiracy to bankrupt Philhealth of its funds and resources. There is a specter that is haunting the Philippines, the specter of SARS-CoV-2. As of latest count, this virus has slain in its path nearly 3,500, rendered ill more than 200,000, and still counting. COVID-19 has left many families orphaned, grieving, and suffering. It has deprived an innumerable, left with no one to support them. The human cost is immeasurable. Combounding this despairing reality, the economy has suffered immensely, a heretofore unimaginable 45.5% adult unemployment at 27.3 million Filipinos and a whopping 2.2 trillion in estimated economic losses. This virus-borne disease and the resultant suffering is more than enough to make a people fall on its knees in prayer and object surrender. Alas, for us, this is not the only disaster to be. As if this cataclysm that has befallen us is not devastating enough, we are made to suffer another catastrophe, man-made this time. The endemic corruption and gross mismanagement of Philhealth, which is not, if not corrected or eradicated, will pose grave risks not only to health but also the lives of all Filipinos. So the Committee of the Whole, which was constituted last July 28, 2020, conducting inquiry in aid of legislation on the alleged rampant corruption, incompetence, and inefficiency in the Philhealth, conducted three public hearings on the resolutions 461, 474, and 475 held August 4, 11, and 18. The nature of the three resolutions, Mr. President, included in the agenda of the hearings hinted on the probable administrative and criminal culpability of some personalities from the Philhealth Board, the President and Chief Executive Officer, Senior Vice President, Regional Vice Presidents, down to numbers of ranking officials of Philhealth. These serious allegations have put into question whether there are indeed legitimate reasons that lead to the stepping down of no less than Philhealth's anti-fraud legal officer after complaining about his delayed salaries, presumably after he started investigating the probable breach of some Philhealth's ranking officials. The discussions during the hearings were both investigative and inquiries in aid of legislation intended to reform the administrative operations of Philhealth. They conducted hearings also intended to look into the proposal or intended to look into their proposal to come up with sound recommendations to put an end to the allegation of corruption and put in place reforms in the administration of the country's premier healthcare provider through possible filing of bills to amend the Philhealth law. The controversies surrounding Philhealth have long been surfacing. It surfaced as early as 2015 that led to the, or lead to the reported loss of billions of pesos due to some unscrupulous practices like ghost dialysis, unnecessary catheter surgeries, case upscaling, questionable rise in claims, bloated budget proposals for ICT projects, just to name some, Mr. President. In fact, sometime in 2018, Philhealth employees all around the country simultaneously signed or staged a protest to denounce the corporation's widespread corruption and inefficient management of its operations. It is the main concern of the committee that the duty of the government to serve, protect, and promote the people's right to health and maintain honesty and integrity in the public service as guaranteed by the Constitution shall be upheld at all times. The principal consideration and objective of the Committee of the Whole in hearing the aforementioned resolution is to gather sufficient data and information that will serve as indicators on the need to reshuffle or to totally reorganize the entire Philhealth bureaucracy, provide for stiffer penalties as a means of stopping the widespread frauds as well as recommend to appropriate agencies in government to investigate and ultimately file the necessary charges to whoever is involved in the alleged malversation, if necessitated. Moreover, the committee would like to determine the efficacy of the existing Philhealth law with the hope of introducing administrative reforms on the ways and means to improve its operations and uphold its mandate in providing help for the Filipino people who are in dire need of medical assistance. So, Mr. President, after gathering necessary information to come up with a proposed legislation, the committee, or your Committee of the Whole, has the honor to submit the results of the three public hearings to the Senate with the following findings, conclusions, and recommendations. The series of hearings unearthed the following grave issues. Number one, the interim reimbursement mechanism, legal basis or lack of it, and its shoddy or shady implementation. Second, the ICT project as an anatomy of corruption. Third, the Philhealth financial status, specifically the alleged manipulation of Philhealth's financial statements earlier flogged by the Commission on Audit, its actuarial life, examining further the claim that Philhealth will die in 2021 or 2022. Fourth, irregularities in the legal sector. And fifth, the B. Brown Abitum Dialysis Centers. Let me start with the statement of facts on the interim reimbursement mechanism. This would be the reimbursement mechanism or IRM. Define as, quote, "A special privilege for the provision of substantial and two ineligible HCIs directly hit by a fortuitous event among HCIPO union healthcare institutions, a fortuitous event with clear and apparent intent to continuously operate and/or rebuild the HCI in order to provide continuous healthcare services to adversely affected Filipinos," end of quote. This allows Philhealth to grant advance payment up to three months to healthcare institutions to support their continuous operation. Now, Mr. President, PCEO Ricardo Morales cited paragraphs C, D, and J of Section 16 of Republic Act 7875 as amended, otherwise known as the National Health Insurance Act of 1995, as the legal basis for the implementation of the IRM. Philhealth Circular 0034 Series of 2013 or the Guidelines on the Provision of Special Privileges to those affected by a fortuitous event, signed then, signed by then PCEO Alexander Padilla, served as the impetus for the IRM. Under the said circular, "Fortuitous events are described as acts of God, like floods or typhoons, or an act of man, such as rebellions, insurgencies, and wars." Based on the Circular 2020 0007, the rationale of the IRM is premised on Section 1, letter P, Public Health Services of Republic Act 7875 as amended by Republic Act 9241 and RA 10606, otherwise known as the National Health Insurance Act 2013. End of quote. "The government shall be responsible for providing public health services for all groups such as women, children, indigenous people, displaced communities, and communities in environmentally endangered areas. While the program shall focus on the provision of personal health services, preventive and preventive public health services are essential for reducing the need and spending for personal health services." As clearly seen from the statement of the objectives of Philhealth Circular 2020 0007, the same is intended to ensure continuous access to Philhealth benefits and be able to provide substantial aid to HCIs in rebuilding their critically damaged healthcare system in order to provide continuous provision of healthcare services to all Filipinos adversely affected by fortuitous event. During the August 11, 2020 Committee of the Whole hearing, Attorney Roberto Labbe Jr., the corporate legal counsel, stated that there has been a decrease in patient census and increase of cost of hospitals, hence the IRM response. This is to ensure that hospitals will be able to continue its operations during the pandemic even if these hospitals have no or low COVID-19 cases. Now, Mr. President, the IRM has been implemented in the past to facilitate the recovery of affected HCIs, to make them operational for members. In 2009, the payment scheme for IRM was implemented for accredited healthcare providers in NCR and Rizal Province, which incurred destruction of facilities and equipment due to typhoon Ondoy, as identified and validated by the corporation's PC Number 36 Series of 2009. In 2017, the IRM was used to provide substantial aid in rebuilding critically damaged healthcare systems of accredited HCIs affected by armed conflict in Marawi under PC Number 2170026. In January 2020, Philhealth claimed that more than a billion pesos was made available to accredited hospitals, primary care facilities, ambulatory surgical clinics, freestanding dialysis centers, and maternity package providers in the aftermath of the Taal eruption. This was based on a press list of them. On 20 March 2020, Philhealth released PCR Number 2020 007 on the implementation of the IRM for the COVID-19 response. Premised on the said circular, COVID-19-related IRM implementation appears questionable following its stated objective and to quote, "to ensure continuous access to Philhealth benefits and be able to provide substantial aid to HCIs in rebuilding their critically damaged healthcare system in order to provide continuous provision of healthcare services to all Filipinos adversely affected by fortuitous events." Philhealth Circular Number 2020 0007. What is noteworthy, Mr. President, in these previous IRM versions is the fact that HCI beneficiaries suffered serious infrastructure and recorded damages due to the occurrence of a fortuitous event. Thousands of claim records sustained flood damages that would have taken months to reconstitute. The situation demanded emergency payment arrangements to ensure the unimpeded provision of financial risk protection to members. Moreover, as differentiated from PHC 2020 0007, which authorizes Philhealth to make advance payment to HCIs, in the three previous IRMs, Philhealth did not advance any amount to any HCIs but only ensured accelerated reimbursements of HCIs claim subject to certain condition. Now, confronted with the copy of an unnumbered Philhealth Board Resolution during the second Senate Committee of the Whole meeting last August 11, 2020, Philhealth Corporate Secretary, Attorney Jonathan Mangawa, referred to it as PBR or Philhealth Board Regulation Number 2515, which he said was adopted 31 March, March 2020, ratifying the interim reimbursement mechanism nationwide due to coronavirus disease, COVID-19. On 22 April 2020, disseminated through the Outlook Mail of Philhealth was the SOP, the Standard Operating Procedures on the Releases of IRM. It must be noted that the SOP's effectiveness was dated 21 March 2020. Now, it must be underscored that in all of the legal bases cited by Philhealth officials, the reference for provision of health benefits pertains to regular benefit claims, payments of Philhealth. Paragraph C, D, J of Section 16, and displaced communities and communities in environmentally endangered areas, paragraph O of Section 1, Philhealth Circular 2020 0007. And it also mentions substantial aid to HCIs in rebuilding their critically damaged healthcare system adversely affected by a fortuitous event. Substantial aid, huh? Hang on, Mommy, I'm gonna get substantial aid. Also, in the prior implementation of IRM, corresponding circulars set the requirement for Philhealth accreditation, sustained critical damage in infrastructure and identification and validation of the corporation of the magnitude of damage, destruction of the HCIs. These circumstances are lacking or absent in the implementation of the present IRM in response to the pandemic, thus rendering the implementation void from the very beginning. The Standard Operating Procedures, or SOP, on the releases of IRM was only disseminated almost a month after Circular 2020 0007 or on 22 April 2020 through the Outlook Mail of Philhealth. Notwithstanding the late dissemination of the document, the effectivity of the SOP was retroactively dated 21 March 2020. Drawing from the late dissemination of the document, it is the committee's submission that the SOP was antedated to support and justify the immediate execution of MOAs, or MOAs, as early as March 23, and release of IRMs on March 25 to some favored HCIs. There were already 279 hospitals which received IRM funds as early as March 25 to April 22. If indeed the SOP, a requisite document in the implementation of the IRM, was belatedly enacted and signed on 22 April 2020 and made to apply retroactively in 21 March, then we submit that the IRM releases of these 279 hospitals prior to such time, 22 April 2020, were irregularly made as they did not have the SOP on how the same will be released and processed at the time. Another factor that contributes to our assumption of illegality in the enactment and implementation of the interim or the IRM by Philhealth was the belated adoption by the Philhealth Board of PBR 2515 entitled "Resolution Ratifying the Interim Reimbursement Mechanism Nationwide Due to Coronavirus Disease." This resolution was only adopted by the Board on 31 March 2020. Hence, we submit that Philhealth does not have any legal justification when they implemented Circular 2020 0007 as early as 20 March 2020, which, for all intents and purposes, was considered an ultraviresse act of the corporation. On the effectivity of the Philhealth Circular 2020 007, Article 7 of the Circular clearly states, "This circular shall take effect immediately from its publication in a newspaper of general circulation, and three certified true copies have been furnished the Office of National Administrative Register, or ONAR, of the UP Law Center." Emphasis is made on the requirement for the certified true copies furnished to ONAR, O-N-A-R, of UP for the Circular's effectivity only now. Upon the request of the Office of Senator Ping Laxon, the UP ONAR or the UP Law Center issued a certification that Philhealth Circular 2020 0007 was filed on June 11, 2020. If we are to consider the effectivity or the effectivity date of IRM based not only from the publication in a newspaper of general circulation but also on the submission of Philhealth Circular 2020 0007 to ONAR, this would mean that the IRM effectivity is deemed valid only on 11 June 2020. Thus, we submit that the total IRM releases amounting to 14 billion 38 million 393,329 pesos and 14 centavos from March 25, the earliest date of the release, until June 9 was deemed illegal and invalid. Furthermore, Mr. President, SVP for Legal Sector, Attorney Rodolfo Jojo de Lozario, agreed that the IRM fund releases were illegal in the hearings conducted by both the Senate and the House of Representatives. He stated that it would appear that the IRM funds were not released based on the prerequisite set by the Circular on publication and furnishing of copies to the ONAR. These submissions are supported by the case of Republic of Philippines versus Pilipinas Shell Petroleum Corporation, GR Number 173918, where the Supreme Court ruled that both the requirements of publication and filing of administrative issuances intended to enforce existing laws are mandatory for the effectivity of said issuances. Failure to observe the proper requirements makes administrative issuances to have no force and effect. Maliwanan. Ngayon, ito na malala, Mr. President. The COVID-19 budget and releases versus the Philhealth's own estimate of COVID-19 response cost for 2020. As of June 9, 2020, the total IRM releases amount to 14 billion 38 million 393,329 pesos and 14 centavos. Disaggregated as follows. The hospital classification, you will see on the board, level 1, 244 of them, 2.3 billion. Level 2, 185 of them, 4.1 billion. There were three hospitals, 92 of them, 7 billion, 7.1 billion. Freestanding dialysis, 48 of them, 226 million. Maternity care package, 4 of them, 4 million 772,000. Infirmaries, 59, 136 million 907,000, as well as. On another exasperating discovery, Philhealth made a huge mistake when its planned disbursement for IRM COVID was way higher than its assumptions of how many patients to eventually cover. The IRM allocations for far exceeded the estimated cost of COVID- nineteen hospital admissions, Mr. President. Philhealth estimated two hundred nine thousand COVID- nineteen cases for twenty twenty. About twenty percent of the COVID cases developed difficulty breathing and require hospital care as suggested by WHO. The breakdown of the COVID patients by case type, according to DOH, mild ninety-point-three percent, severe zero-point-nine percent, critical zero-point-six percent. The total estimated cost of COVID for COVID in twenty twenty, according to them, is three-point-three billion pesos. Critical, nine hundred eight-six thousand, severe, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, mild, one-point-six billion. Total, three million three hundred one thousand, plus plus. Philhealth estimated three-point-three billions for the cost of COVID for the entire twenty twenty. Pero, Mr. President, ang budget na nilagay nila ay twenty-six-point-eight billion pesos. As of June nine twenty twenty, fourteen billion pesos already were released. Ang layo. San napunta. Why did it do so? This bolsters the argument that the ninety-day historical claims of hospitals as metrics was not really based on facts but on surmises blocked from either. Now, moving on to the questionable IRM fund releases to HCIs, as I mentioned earlier, invalid and irregular IRM fund. That's as of June nine twenty twenty, uh as far as their releases are concerned. There are three hundred thirty-nine HCIs which received IRM funds amounting to more than eight-point-eight million in addition to several other HCIs that received various amounts under this program. Um, you will see on the board the hospital classification and the number of HCIs uh and the funds exceeding eight-point-eight million. As you um browse on it, let me move to the releases to non-COVID facilities. Unlike previous IRM releases to recipient HCIs with sustained damages from fortuitous events, there was no set criteria on which HCI will receive IRM funds. Lack of such qualifiers would mean that the funds were either indiscriminately distributed or that the agency was being generous to the point of being ludicrous. The committee is not adverse to helping these other HCIs. Why not? But they should have been covered by the regular benefit packages of Philhealth and not through this IRM. It has also been established during the hearings, Mr. President, that the implementation of IRM is questionable after Philhealth extended the coverage of the IRM distribution to HCI beneficiaries which were not included in the objective set forth in the circular of Philhealth twenty twenty zero 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 seven. Moreover, the statement of PCEO Morales that IRM became COVID-specific was made only sometime in May when the continuous implementation of these for the IRM became untenable for lack of funds. During the August eighteen twenty twenty hearing, Secretary Duque of the Department of Health, who is chairman of the Board of Phil, averred that IRM is not specific only to COVID cases because it is based on the provisions of the National Health Insurance Act and the Universal Healthcare Act that gives Philhealth the flexibility to implement financing mechanisms. Sabi niya. This is contrary to the purpose stated in the raise of funds from Bayanihan to Hill as one act, which is specific to COVID- nineteen cases. If that was so relying on the very same act as basis for Philhealth memo circulars, would have made that gargantuan amount of money disappear faster than the blink of an eye. Non-hospitals became beneficiaries likewise of Philhealth's largesse. Such may have been Philhealth and Secretary Duque's intent, but as we already concluded, the IRM was at the onset an ultra virus act or illegal even, Mr. President. To reiterate, from the record of Philhealth IRM releases as of June nine twenty twenty, the total sum of two hundred twenty-six million, three hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred twelve pesos and twenty centavos was released to forty-eight freestanding dialysis nationwide. One hundred thirty-six million, nine hundred seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-four, or fifty-nine in February's. And four million, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred sixty was released or re-released to four maternity care package providers. An official submission of the updated data on IRM releases, I believe, Mr. President, should be provided by Philhealth to validate the said figures. Now, on freestanding dialysis, the committee took particular concern to Be Brown Avitum Dialysis Center. And, Mr. President, in a span of seven days, seven days, Philhealth released almost fifteen-point-four million and four-point-two million to two Be Brown Avitum Dialysis Center branches in Tondo, Manila, also its two branches located in the second district of Quezon City, which received the amount of eight-point-ninety-five million and five-point-three million respectively. Note should also be made that the date when the MOAs of these branches of Be Brown Avitum Philippines were filed on the same dates, April fifteen for the two branches in Tondo and April twenty-two for the two branches in Quezon City. And the IRMs were released on the same dates, April twenty-three for the two branches in Tondo and May four for the two branches in Quezon City. Ang bilis ano. Ahirapan 'yung ibang ospital. Ahirapan 'yung mga nangakailangan. Buwan ang iniintay. Etong bilis. Seven days. Sabay-sabay pa. Now, we can go to elaborate on that later, but who is Be Brown? Be Brown Avitum Philippines Incorporated, formally registered as Philippine Renal Care Incorporated, is a Philhealth-accredited freestanding dialysis clinic that has twenty-five branches in Luzon. Freestanding dialysis clinic, oh, Mr. President. The following are the corporation's directors and officers based on its two thousand nineteen general information sheet. The chairman is a Lam Chi Ho, Malaysian. The president and managing director is Eduardo Rodriguez. And Lee Chung Hyung, Malaysian. Arsenialadores, Ricky Paglikawan, Yolanda Elizar, Melina Rosa Rodriguez. How much is the payment made to Be Brown? The table shows the breakdown of IRM releases to Be Brown Avitum from April twenty-three to May five twenty twenty, amounting to forty-five million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred eighteen. The list is on the board, Mr. President. While you are checking on it, allow me to take a sip of water. Initially, it was discovered that Philhealth released almost fifteen-point-four million and four-point-two million to two Brown Avitum Dialysis Center branches in Tondo and in Quezon City, eight-point-nine-five, five-point-three million. Noteworthy are the facts that the date when the MOAs for these branches were filed on the same dates, as I mentioned earlier, were on the same dates. Now, the photos that the Office of Senator Laxon have taken from the Be Brown Avitum Philippines Incorporated in Del Pan Street, Tondo, on August ten twenty twenty, just a few days ago, showed that the center has no isolation area and only caters to outpatient services. Is the forty-five million paid to Be Brown accurate and reflective of the services rented to the Philhealth members? That is the big question, Mr. President. Based on documents and testimonies provided during the committee's investigation, the same has not been established according to eto, machine learning identification detection and analysis system, or Midas. The Midas report submitted by Philhealth, it was learned that from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, Philhealth has paid a total of eight hundred eleven million for hemodialysis claims from Be Brown facilities across the country. It is there on the board, Mr. President. All the places, accreditation numbers, the regions and the amounts totaling eight hundred eleven million. It could easily be established based on this table, from this table, that the Tondo branch with accreditation number T-nine-one-zero-two-seven-five-four-three has the highest amount claimed from Philhealth amounting to one hundred thirty-six million from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen. The regression analysis presented by Midas shows that the branches of Togigarao and Tondo appear to have outlier behavior, which means that they deviate from the expected amount of claims given the hemodialysis machine capacity. Uh, 'yung capacity, Mr. President, as the independent variable compared to their peers. The branch in Baguio, however, which ranked as the top two in terms of amount claimed from Philhealth, was not included in the regression study due to the zero value of hemodialysis machines in the accreditation records. Furthermore, the analysis also revealed an inverse relationship between the number of hemodialysis sessions served and the average age of patients of freestanding dialysis clinics in Areas One and Two. According to the same Midas report, the Philippine Society of Neprology, Neprology, has suggested that the average capacity of hemodialysis machines is at seventy-two sessions per month. Using this value, we can compute the estimated capacity of Be Brown Avitum Philippines Incorporated branches in two thousand eighteen. The table shows that six, six of the Be Brown branches exceed the ninety percent threshold for sessions to capacity ratio. The six branches are Tondo, Quezon City, Togigarao, Binyan, Olongabo and Baler. The list is also on the board. Further, Mr. President, the regression analysis suggested a lower total session count for facilities catering to patients with a mean age of fifty-two to fifty-five years old, a cohort with increased mortality rate as compared to younger cohorts with chronic kidney disease. Now, given this observation, evidence for ghost patients must be sought after. The report recommended that this can be done by retroactively matching the latest death data from the Philippine Statistics Authority. In short, Mr. President, Be Brown enjoys a fast and express lane in the release of Philhealth payment funds. Kahit na 'yung ibang branch, 'yung ibang branch walang dialysis machine, pero may mga recorded dialysis sessions. Nagda-dialysis ng multo. During the eighteen August twenty twenty hearing, Secretary Duque admitted that IRM funds released to Be Brown Avitum was illegal and that they will rectify it. Niyan rin eh. Given that admission and given SVP de Lozario's admission, will now be responsible, liable and accountable for this major fiasco. The foregoing disproves Philhealth executives' emotive assertions during the hearing that the IRM releases also covered dialysis centers because as the document shows, Be Brown Avitum still does not grant privileges to dialysis patients who are directly or indirectly related to fortuitous events as clearly stated in Philhealth Circular twenty twenty zero 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 seven, the very basis of Be Brown's over forty-five million IRM releases. That brings me to the issue of preferential treatment to HCIs, naman. Again, hospital, uh, no, the healthcare institution. One of the contentions of IRM as a policy is that the determination of the IRM amounts for HCIs and its consequent approval and fund releases are very centralized. It follows that the preference and prioritization of which hospitals will receive the IRM funds remain in the Central Office. In fact, according to Region Eight Acting Regional Vice President Michael Gibson Hernandez, during the eleven August hearing, regional offices are only authorized to review requisite documents such as the letter of intent and memorandum of agreement. Once complete, they will forward the said documents to the Central Office and await for the approval, the approval which will go through the Office of Dr. Ish Pargas, Policy Sector, and SVP Renato Limshaku, Fund Management Sector, to the Office of HEA Laborde, and finally the Desk of PCEO Morales. These are all reflected in the document called Document Review and Approval Request or TRAR. After the receipt of the letter of approval and the signed MOA from the Central Office, the RVPs will then request for fund transfer from the Office of SVP Limshaku before they can process the release of the amount to the hospitals. A review of the documents provided by Attorney Valeri Olero, Regional Vice President of Region Six, would show that recommendations for IRM releases requests or IRM requests were made as early as April eighth and consequently on April fifteen for a total of sixteen hospitals. Subsequent follow-up letters and correspondence notwithstanding, there was still no fund release approved by the Central Office. Local hospitals dealing with the surge in cases of new coronavirus disease have yet to collect five hundred twenty-one million from Philhealth Insurance Corporation, according to Mayo. according to Mayor Jerry Treñas. Treñas, in August three, a letter to Phil Health Western Missias Vice President Valeri Aniliero Oliero called the agency's attention regarding the claims of seven private and two government hospitals. Meanwhile, raised during one of the hearings was the concern of Eastern Samar Governor Ben Evagdol, who claimed that the government hospitals did not receive IRM funds from Phil Health. IRM HCI's transaction history of Region Eight shows that as early as twenty March twenty twenty, PRO Eighth Office already has submissions to the Central Office of Hospitals Letter of Intent and Memorandum of Agreement, which was, were requirements for the IRM releases. In fact, from twenty March to April twenty, eighty-one hospitals with IRM requests were already submitted to the Central Office for approval. Among the hospitals, Phil Health Regional Office endorsed to Central Office on March twenty-three were ten government hospitals in Eastern Samar. Talagang nagmamadali na't hirap na hirap, pero ang tagal walang nangyayari sa Central Office. The Central Office subsequently approved the endorsement, the endorsement on April twenty-seven, but has not acted upon it since then. Hence, these government hospitals have yet to receive any IRM releases as of date. Now, during the eleventh August hearing also, some members of the committee, some senators also raised the case of Hospital ng Maynila, or OSMA, which did not receive its IRM fund amounting to nineteen million, three hundred eighty-two thousand one hundred eight. During the interpolation, PCEO Morales insisted that Phil Health already released nineteen point three million to OSMA on June twenty-three. The assertions of Morales contradicted the letter of OSMA through OIC Hospital Director Carm Oliver Lucky dated July nine, twenty twenty, inquiring for an update on the IRM application of the hospital which was submitted twenty March twenty twenty. Contrary to the submission of Phil Health SVP Renato Limshako to the Committee of Document Authority for Fund Transfer, showing transfer to several hospitals, including OSMA as of June twenty-three, based on the official receipt, MLA nine five seven five eight zero eight from the Office of the Treasurer of Manila, showing that the amount of nineteen point three million was only paid out Phil Health on August eleventh, twenty twenty. Eh, kasi na-naunkat eh, 'yung hearing, biglang lumabas. Now, there are HCIs with no accreditation with pending cases. Worse, the IRM was even dispersed to HCIs which are not accredited by Phil Health and have pending cases for violations of its warranties of accreditation. Una na 'yung Catarman Doctos Hospital in Northern Samar in the amount of nine point six million, which was released on April fifteenth. Saint Benedict Hospital in Davao del Sur in the amount of eleven point seven million, which was released on May five. On March thirty-one, twenty twenty, Acting Regional Vice President Hernandez endorsed the IRM fund availability of Catarman Doctos Hospital amounting to nine point six million with a note purposely indicating that the hospital is under temporary suspension of payments. Sanction to notify the Central Office that said HCI has a pending case with Phil Health. Hernandez asserted that Catarman's IRM fund release was recommended per IRM policy that includes HCIs under sanction as qualified to avail the IRM. A document review and approval request for the RAR, as I mentioned earlier, for Catarman shows that the SVPs Pargas and Limshako signed on April seventh, twenty twenty, while Laborde and Morales' date of signing was only April three. On eighth April, PCEO Morales signed the memorandum approving the release of funds for the IRM request of Catarman Doctos Hospital, na may pending, ah. Considering the timeline, it is highly questionable why the memorandum of agreement or approval of the release of funds signed by PCEO Morales for Catarman Doctos Hospital Incorporated was dated April eighth, twenty twenty, or five days earlier than his supposed document review and approval of Catarman's request. In the course of the hearing, it was established that SVP Limshako has a close relative in the Catarman Doctos Hospital Incorporated. Now, if this is not a case of palakasan, this committee does not know what is. On April twenty-two, the fund was released, Catarman Doctos Hospital. Eyon, maraming hasty payment releases under the IRM. Camantayan lang 'yung naghihiga host ng ospital na nakaka-ila, ay hindi pa nakakatanggap. The haste in payment releases under IRM is also noteworthy particularly to Level Three, Level Three hospitals in Regions Five and Eight, which has records of low COVID-nineteen cases at the time of the filing for IRM. Now, to underscore this, Mr. President, three Level Three hospitals, Equal Medical Center, Equal Regional Training and Teaching Hospital and Universidad de Santa Isabel de Naga Incorporated from Region Five, with the record only of one COVID-nineteen patient, one COVID-nineteen patient, filed claims under IRM March twenty-three, twenty twenty, and just two weeks later, the fund amounting to two hundred forty-seven million, forty-six thousand million, was released to the said hospitals. Meanwhile, two hospitals, Eastern Missias Regional Medical Center and Divine World Hospital in Region Eight, with a record only of one COVID patient at that time, received an accumulated fund releases amounting to one hundred ninety-six point five million in just a span of only one week from their filing of IRM claims on twenty-three March twenty twenty. Abay, ano... Also based on the record of PRO Eight, four private hospitals in Eastern Samar received IRM releases amounting to the sum of twenty-one million, five hundred, four thousand, five hundred sixty-four. Imagoite Concepcion Clinic in a hospital received its IRM funds on April twenty-four, while Domingo Casano Hospital's IRM fund amounted to twelve point five million, the highest in Eastern Samar, was released on May five. Eto pa. Mr. President, there is non-liquidation of the IRM releases. Malala, ito. This is one for the books of the Commission on Audit. We go now to the funds liquidation. On June twenty-four, twenty twenty, President and CEO Morales signed the memorandum on the deferment of IRM liquidation activities. He ordered the deferment of fund liquidation in effect for the claims of HCIs originally granted with IRM form or from its supposed reckoning date of sixteen March twenty twenty to a later date. Considering that Phil Health deferred liquidation of IRM funds while directing payment of claims covered by IRM schedules, this might invite adverse audit observation memos or AOMs or notice of disallowance from the COA. Paying the claims already covered by the IRM funds, advanced payment, instant amount to overlapping of payments. Oh, in implementing this memorandum of President Morales on the deferment of the interim reimbursement mechanism liquidation activities, Mr. Arnell F. De Jesus, the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of Phil Health, issued OCOO Memorandum Number Twenty Twenty dash zero three dated July fifteen, twenty twenty, stating that Phil Health Regional Offices, PROs, were given the option on the matter of liquidation of the IRM. In other words, there were no concrete guidelines in the matter of liquidation of the IRM. Bilyunan, Mr. President, ah, bilyunan. The optional liquidation directive stated under Memorandum Order Twenty Twenty Zero Three Two contradicts Item Ten of G One of Memo Circular Twenty Twenty Zero 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 Seven, which provides that for additional IRM fund to be requested, the previously released IRM fund has to be liquidated by at least eighty percent on or prior to the ninety days, ninety days after the occurrence of an event. Mr. President, it would appear that even as we speak, Phil Health has still no guidelines for a reconciliation program or a workable mechanism to recover the millions advanced to the healthcare institution. To recover the millions. Now, Mr. President, Phil Health SVP Israel Pargas confirmed that liquidation was deferred to a later date, which is still to be announced as testified by SVP Pargas during the hearing. I quoted, "Mr. Pargas, as of today, sir, we do not have the exact date on when to liquidate according to the policy or to the memo, but we were already given an instruction to have the liquidation immediately." On the other hand, Mr. President, on eighteen August, Phil Health SVP Renato Limshako reported that two point three billion has been liquidated. Now, assuming that this is true, this is only fifteen percent of the fourteen point nine billion they have already released? Now, between Mr. Pargas and Mr. Limshako, who do we believe? Mr. President, let me just move on. I do not want to answer that question, my question. Withholding taxes from the IRM fund. Phil Health is considered a withholding tax agent, Mr. President, on income tax payments and for withholding taxes and business taxes, value-added tax and other percentage tax by the BIR. Considering that IRM releases are considered advanced payments, the agency must withhold the tax due on HCIs and medical practitioners. SVP Limshako during the eleventh August hearing responded adversely, stating that, eto sabi niya, relative to withholding tax and withhold natin ay private. Sa government, hindi tayo nagwi-withhold. Total fourteen point nine seven billion, lahat kalahati is subject to withholding tax. Senator Laxon said, "Na-private, naka-withhold kayo?" Limshako said, "Sa private lang po." SVP Limshako further said that they already withheld taxes amounting to one hundred fifty-six million, one hundred fifty-six million, and remitted the same to BIR on August three. However, it appeared that the said amount was not automatically charged against IRM funds released to HCIs. He also insisted that they did not know that they could deduct this tax before the release of funds because IRM is in the form of advanced payments. Hence, DBIR payments made were charged against the corporate operating budget of COB to be recouped during the liquidation of HCIs. As, and I call from the hearings, SVP Limshako said, "Di namin alam na magwi-withhold kami sa umpisa." Hindi do, SVP Limshako, na magwi-withhold kahit na may August seventh, twenty twenty memorandum na from Jerry Divina, ASM of Controllership Department. He was requesting for the review of a corporate memorandum subject which holding of two percent expanded withholding tax EWT in issuance of BIR two-three zero seven. In approve pa ito ni SVP Limshako and SVP Santiago noong August ten and was emailed to the concerned officials on the same day. Pero during the August eleventh hearing, hindi do niya alam. Or dios por siento, ay, I mean, por santo, Mr. President. Considering the taxes due to the IRM releases was paid to BIR by the Central Office and not the regional offices, it would be a form of discount or, sorry, document tampering, if not outright falsification of public documents. If the regional offices will be ordered to release BIR Form two-three zero seven to the HCIs within their area of responsibility considering that the taxes due to the IRMs released to the HCIs have not in fact been withheld and collected by Phil Health. The fact that Phil Health withheld taxes for COVID-nineteen IRM releases in August three appeared to be an afterthought following the Senate Resolution dated July twenty-sixth, which raised the issue of withholding taxes as one of the matters to be discussed. In fact, Limshako mentioned that taxes for IRM releases in prior years, prior years were withheld, not prior, but during the liquidation of hospitals. We will deal with that during the period of recommendations later, Mr. President. Let me now move to the information technology issue. The reliability and efficiency of a credible information technology system has been proven to simplify, simplify processes and to increase transparency, transparency in transactions. Example of which is the computerization of the JSIS, the BIR and other government agencies who, eh, which aims to benefit from IT for more efficient, accurate, and effective delivery of public service. In Phil Health, however, it seems that the procurement and completion of their IT system has been the cause of so many, so many corruption issues. This is either they do not want a transparent system. Network switches were verified as non-utilized, unutilized. So, Mr. President, from the look of things, these people from Phil Health, in trying to make it appear that what they procured was Cisco twenty-nine sixty XR, resorted to doctoring or even forging documents to make the Senate President and the members of the committee of the whole believe their story. What complicated the matter was the statement made by the winning bidder? Oh, 'yung MicroGenesis, stating that what they have quoted is for Cisco ninety-two hundred switches. So, Mr. President, from the foregoing, it is evident that SVP Aragona, Alex Tugabuya, and the personnel of PRO NCR were colluding with one another to mislead the committee of the whole and the truth about the additional fifteen network switches that were procured in August two thousand nineteen. In the last committee hall hearing, committee of the hall hearing, In the last Committee of the Whole hearing, August 18, Phil Health's SVP and Chief Information Officer Aragona and Senior IT Officer Gabuya finally made the admission that the item being procured was Cisco 9200 and not Cisco 2960XR upon presentation of evidence that even MicroGenesis, the winning bidder, stated such in our article released by them. On the second hearing, August 11, Mr. President, the IT Secretary Begori Honason pointed out that the ISSP must be submitted for approval before the DICT. This is a requisite before a government entity may procure any IT item. However, there are items in the IT budget proposal that were included which are not submitted nor approved by the DICT. Furthermore, some of the proposed items in the IT budget proposal would show that there are items without any specification and indication of number of units. The contents of the internal audit report, "Yun mga ayon na ayon natin nasagot eh, no?" "Ande, titignan mo namin, ah, isasabit namin." Anyway, I said, "So you're saying that this is the first time? You have been there since 2000 during the time of former President Macapagalaroyo?" "Gagadari Dukey." If I may, with your permission, Mr. President, I would like to direct that Corporate Secretary holds the records, Tony Jonathan Mangawa. "Tony Mangawa, how many times have you declared, nasa?" Sagot niya, "I came in as Corporate Secretary only 2017." So, from 2017 onwards, Mr. President, I can attest that this is the first time that "Wala tayo na ako ba maganda sagot eh, no?" Although, this representation has no issue on the fact that the board has exercised the same. What concerns me is the fact that these cases submitted for wholesale amnesty have been pending with the part of protest of Phil Review Department for nine years. Such failure to act in gross neglect of duty have resulted to the financial prejudice of Phil Health and the healthcare providers, as the case may be. While SVP for Legal Sector Adolfo de Rosario projects that he is against fraud, it seems that the records prove otherwise considering that a lot of cases are still pending or unannacted upon by the agency. Another topic relative to the junior category of the so-called "Sure, na sumisi." the success in prosecuting cases, whether pending in Phil Health or those filed in regular courts or quasi judicial bodies. As for the Department of Budget and Management, Mr. President, the committee is calling for the DVM through its procurement service to execute the necessary procurement in Phil Health's state on the latter's information technology needs, whether hardware or software. Another recommendation of the committee that will provide additional layer of protection to ensure Phil Health will be financially sound and solvent in that transaction fall within acceptable parameters is for the Insurance Commission to be involved in scrutinizing the operations of Phil Health. For the GOCC, for the Governance Commission for GOCCs, I should say, as the governing body for government corporations, the committee urges it to actively and decisively perform its mandate as a central advisory, monitoring and oversight body of Phil Health. In particular, it should identify the necessary skills and qualifications required for appointing directors to the Phil Health and consider the suitability and qualifications of the candidates before submitting its recommendations to the president. The fit and proper rule should be strictly applied. The directors must be chosen based on their integrity, experience, education, training and competence above others. Take a proactive role in evaluating the performance of Phil Health's directors and officers and discipline them if necessary. Conduct periodic evaluation and assessment of the performance of the Phil Health. Require reports on the operations and management of the corporation, particularly on the management of its assets and finances as provided. Recommend appropriate measures to improve Phil Health's overall performance and service delivery in accordance with its mandate based on its most recent performance scorecard. And last, for the GCG, we call on them to conduct a special audit for Phil Health's finances, possibly in the last five to 10 years. The committee is likewise seeking the Anti-Money Leondery Council for it to immediately investigate and determine whether the bank accounts of those Phil Health officials and private entities that have been implicated in the malversation of Phil Health funds fall within the category of the so-called suspicious accounts. And also, Mr. President, for the various Senate committees, the Committee of the Whole has provided for a number of recommendations that are contained in this report that we expect to be timely acted upon. In closing, Mr. President, our country is in dire straits. Gross domestic products shrunk 16.5% from a year ago according to the National Statistics Agency, the worst reading in a data series going back to 1981, and that is a far The pressure on government finances becomes even greater as we try to implement the Universal Healthcare Act, which aims to cover all of us. Phil Health is in a deep hole as well. How deep, we are not certain yet. Unless we discover the real state of Phil Health finances, we will never know. And that lack of knowledge is something all of us can ill afford to help. High unemployment caused primarily by the closing of businesses due to COVID-19 will result in fewer individuals from whom Phil Health can exact remunes. That is another blow to Phil Health, Mr. President. As if that is not bad enough, Phil Health is hemorrhaging because of inefficient running of the corporation, compounded by corrupt practices inside. Fortunately for us, the latter two causes are preventable and can be solved by us. We must thus exert our utmost authority and vigilance to read read Phil Health of undesirables and punish to the fullest extent of the law criminals. Less than this, we cannot allow. Our suffering people deserve nothing less. Mr. President, public service demands total honesty from its public officials and employees. And may I add, using the classic admonition by the ancient Romans, "They must not only be pure and honest, but also perceived to be pure and honest," like Caesar's wife. Thank you. Good afternoon, my dear colleagues. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the onset, I'd like to congratulate our Senate President for a very comprehensive report on the discussions and investigations on Phil Health. Congratulations, sir. We have several of our colleagues lined up that would like to give their cosponsorship and as well as manifestation of support, Mr. President.